Good evening and welcome to the Joint City Council Successor Agency to the Series Redevelopment Agency Meeting for Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty, or excuse me, two thousand twenty. Before we get started, obviously, you can see we are having some technical difficulties, so, you know, I would say please bear with us, but I'm not sure we're going to get it fixed this evening, so we'll just have to kind of muddle through. With that, could we have the roll call, please?
Council and agency member Condit.
Here.
Council and agency member Dorosset.
Here.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Here.
Council and agency member Klein.
Here.
Mayor and Chairman Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Jim Delhart, local businessman, please.
Thank you. Before I pray, I just want to say a word. I'm so thankful for all the city employees and you council people. You know, I've been in business in series over fifty years, and there's always been such a multitude of complaints. In the last two years, it seems like they're just down to nothing. I like what Dale Carnegie said, "We have a right to complain if we've got a heart to help, but if we don't have a heart to help, we don't have a word to say," so appreciate that. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight. So thankful, Lord Jesus, for everything you do for us. Lord, this city that we live in, Lord, I thank you, Lord, that they still, we still have the opportunity to pray in city places. Lord, I thank you for all these things. I ask you to bless the council. Lord, that some of the things that they don't understand, you are a God of mercy, you're a God of wisdom, you're a God of knowledge. Lord, when we ask of you, Lord, you'll do these things for us. Lord, as you said in Jeremiah thirty-three and three, he said in the Bible, he said, "Call upon me, and I will answer you and tell you great and unsearchable things that you do not know." So when we ask the Lord, and we're asking the Lord tonight for wisdom, for knowledge, to bring this city to the beautiful place that it's been and where it's going, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll move to citizens' communication to the council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I don't have any speaker cards, so I will open up to the public if there is anyone that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, please come forth and state your name for the record. Okay. Hearing none, or seeing none, we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. Looks like we have two. The first one is confirmation of the two thousand twenty mayoral appointments of council members to boards, commissions, and committees. In our packet, I've included the mayoral appointments for two thousand twenty. I don't know if the councils had a chance to take a look at that. I'm open to any suggestions if someone has an issue or would like to be put on a different committee. I just wanted to take a stab at putting people where I thought they'd fit best or might be of interest to them, so I'll open it up to any of the council members to see if anybody would like a change or is dissatisfied with something. If not, I'll look for... Do we need a motion on this, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to approve council concurrence of two thousand twenty mayoral appointments of the council members for the year, for this year.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and agency member Condit.
Aye.
Council and agency member Dorosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairman Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. The next item, the Beautification Ad hoc Committee Appointments. Mr. Wells, are you going to take this?
Yeah, I can get the introduction started. As the council knows, we solicited applications for the Beautification Committee. In the month, basically, of December, those applications closed on January third. We were pleased to announce that there was a significant response to that application. We did receive twenty applicants. Those are listed in the agenda packet, and of the twenty, the council had previously set the number of committee members to be ten, so the staff looks for council's direction on how to make the decision on the appointments. So we'll turn that over for your council, for you to give us direction on how you'd like to move forward with the formation of those. We'll note that one of the twenty, we did verify, living in city limits and business represented, one of the twenty did not appear to be representing a business and was not in the city limits, so we can, just depending on what you decide, we can provide you additional information if you'd like on that.
Okay, thank you. Couple of comments I'd add. First of all, it's great to see such a, you know, large interest. Obviously, we said we were going to have ten, so I'll, I mean, I'll make a suggestion, but I'll kind of turn it over to council member Condit to see how he might like to decide. Since we have ten, I think originally you had suggested perhaps two from each district and then the mayor get two, so...
That's correct.
I don't know if everybody's ready at this point to pick the two from their districts. If they are, then I would say go ahead and... Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mike, but...
I'm just really not sure the two that are from my district because they were submitted, you know, without my knowledge, so... Oh, yeah, I mean, yes, I do. I'm, what am I thinking? I'm trying to get over a head cold, so...
Yes, okay. So what I'll do is I'll probably let you guys go, and then whoever's left over, then, you know, I can...
Tell by addresses?
Yeah, I know, that's what I mean.
I just didn't mark them.
Who wants to go first with their two?
I will.
Okay.
For my district, it would be Jean Yeekly and Alyssa Long.
So that's twenty and...
Seven.
Seven, okay. Whoever wants to go next?
I'll go ahead and go.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and pick. I know she's busy a lot, Brandy Meyer, and I'm going to go with the young Krishan Mahartta. Did I say that correct? Close enough.
And from District One, I will be selecting Mr. John Warren and Mr. Richard McKay.
And I believe from my district, I will pick Larry Lopes and Stephen Whitney.
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 Okay, it looks like it leaves me. I would pick Anthony Canela and Charlie Fernandez. Okay, all right, does that, that gives their ten, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, okay. We need a motion on this, Tom?
Yes.
Okay.
Rather than reciting all names, you could just say as recommended by each council member.
Move to adopt the appointments to the Beautification Committee as the motions made by the individual council members.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and agency member Condit.
Aye.
Council and agency member Dorosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairman Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the thirteen consent calendar items, or two public hearing items, or two discussion items? Okay, hearing none, we will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Item ten.
Number ten, number seven.
Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than item seven or ten? Okay, I will bring it back to the council for direction on the other items.
Move to approve one, two, three, A, four, five, A, B, C, six, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and agency member Condit.
Aye.
Council and agency member Dorosset.
Yes.
Vice Chair and Vice, Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairman Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, item number seven, resolution number two thousand twenty dash oh-two, authorizing the overstaffing of one public safety dispatcher position in the police department and approving a budget amendment. Councilmember Klein?
Mr. Wells, I have one question, is, we have, we got any cannabis money from the testing lab? Have they been up and running yet?
No, they're not up and running yet. They just submitted their building permits last week.
Okay, so the next question is, so we are going to reallocate some of our general fund money for public safety?
That's correct.
Will this be, possibly be on next year's budget?
Yes, it would likely be included in next year's budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience have any questions? I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty oh-two.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and agency member Condit.
Aye.
Council and agency member Dorosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
Yes.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairman Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, item number ten, resolution number two thousand twenty dash oh-five, approving contract change order number one for the downtown electrical improvement projects, one, excuse me, excuse me, phase one project. Vice Mayor Rhino?
My questions are, I initially thought when we talked about the ACE train parking that it was going to be all along El Camino.
That is correct, but it will also come into the downtown area as well.
I'm sorry, what?
That is correct. The primary parking is along El Camino, on the west side of El Camino between the freeway and El Camino, but the overflow parking for that area will incorporate and go around Whitmore Park and this surrounding area.
Okay, and so currently, if you drive down Third Street, the section that we're talking about, it, there are no signal, there are, there are no streetlights. There's one on a wooden pole that's kind of in the middle of the park. Is that one going to be removed?
The wooden pole in the park, I believe, stays. Daniel, do you recall on that one? But yeah, the idea here with this amendment is adding lighting with, for the, consistent with the rest of the project along the west side of Third Street, along the frontage of Whitmore Park.
Okay, so we're going to go from having a small historical park that has been in series for many years, and now we're going to light up the entire east side of the park. So it's basically going to look, you're going to have lights on this side, you're going to have twelve-foot lights on this side, and so it's basically going to look like a BART parking lot?
No, no, these are lights that we have in our downtown. This is the same lighting program that we have in our downtown, so we're talking about a low-profile...
So it's not going to be like...
No, these aren't, we're not, you may not be thinking like parking lot lights, no, these are streetlights that are the same aesthetic that's in our downtown on Fourth Street.
Okay, and so there's going to be four on each side of Third Street?
No, there would be, ultimately, there would be eight per side.
Eight per side.
Correct.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at this one drawing, and I think I know where the streetlights are shown, but it looks like they're showing also on the east side of Third Street, as well as the west side.
Ultimately, they would be on both sides of the street.
The portion of work that we'd be adding to the project is putting eight streetlights on the west side of Third Street along, along the Whitmore frontage, and only one on the corner, on the southeast corner of that intersection.
So that short little section, that block, is going to have eight streetlights, nine streetlights, basically?
Yes, one on the east side and eight on the west side of the street.
And how many do we have?
And they're, like you mentioned, they're twelve-foot tall, so they're not, you know, super bright. They're, they're mostly like to light up sidewalks.
But we don't have, do we have a sidewalk on the west side of the park? We don't.
Not currently.
Okay, so if we currently don't have them, then why do we need to spend this money to put streetlights along there when we don't?
The parking, the, the primary purpose of this project is lighting for the downtown area to adequately light all of the parking areas where anybody potentially could park for both visiting the park and for visiting ACE trains. So the whole purpose of this was improving the aesthetic and the visual appearance of the downtown area for the lighting purposes to encourage and encompass a safe environment for the future ACE train. So that's why these funds are being used for this purpose, and the idea would be, this is the first phase with the ACE train, we'd build the rest of the lights in this downtown area.
And are we definitely sure that the ACE train is coming?
It's, it's in state law.
Well, I mean, the state is saying that, well, but we don't know that yet. I mean, it, we, we don't, we don't know until we actually see it being built, so now we're moving our scope of work over to the other side of the park, when in fact, we don't even know if...
This was, this was actually included in the scope of work. We had to scale the project back because we didn't have enough money to build the entire scope of project. We're actually adding a piece of the project in that was not originally able to be afforded because of our allocation from Stanco.
So in the downtown, one block of the downtown, on one, not Third Street, but say on Fourth Street, on one side of a block, how many of those lights do we have?
Which, which block are you looking at? Fourth Street of the downtown?
Mm-hmm, Fourth Street.
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to look at it.
Well, because it seems like eight on one, in one block on one side is pretty excessive.
I, I, off the top of my head, I'm thinking it's four, within that Fourth Street block, but I, off the top of my head, I don't know without looking at it.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll say that my concern is that we're going to forget about our park, and our park is going to be wiped out at some point, and it's going to be a BART parking lot. That's what I'm afraid of by putting lights, and that many lights on the west side, when I believed initially the parking was all going to be along El Camino. I, I didn't know that it was going to be taking over our park by having overflow around it, because if you go down Third Street now during the day, where are all those TID customers going to park if, if ACE, if ACE commuters are going to be parking on that side?
Well, likely, we would put in permit or time-controlled permits for most of those areas, so you would have a limited parking, so you would keep parking spots for TID, so you'd have a thirty-minute, an hour, two-hour, something along those lines.
Well, it would have to be that whole side. Have you been down there during the day and seen how many TID?
Of course I have, of course I have.
Okay, so I personally don't want to see the lighting go along there because I believe it's going to take away from our park. And I, and I get that it's going to be aesthetically pleasing and everything, but it's really hard for me to picture eight lights in that little block on, on one side. It's just, it's, I, I just can't see where that would be aesthetically pleasing.
This was the scope of the original project.
Yeah, so this, this was the phase one of the requirement of the project, which we, we are on the hook for. ACE has, has found in other areas that ridership wants a safe, you know, feel to it, so, and, and those areas where they don't have it lit, then the ridership is less inclined to be utilized. The second phase of this, which will come in two thousand twenty-one, is ACE slash Caltrans spending the money to do the platform and the parking that will be along, I would say, the, the Caltrans portion of ninety-nine, that will increase the number of parking stalls that we have. So when we went to Stanco, Stanco allocated the money for us to be able to do this project, and ACE is kind of watching to say, okay, you know, we're coming with our improvements, but, you know, we want to have your improvements in place, you know, before we start ours, not that they're holding that against us, but this is the step that we've, we've talked about doing. This isn't anything new. In fact, I thought it would have probably been more lit up than what I'm hearing here. I, I don't have any concerns with, with the parking, lighting, but I guess we could always, if it's too bright, I mean, I guess we could always un-energize a light or two if we find that it's, you know, way brighter than we, than it should be.
And we had this engineered, right? So we have a lighting expert look at the aesthetic of downtown as well as the aesthetic here, and the idea was putting streetlights in to light the parking area to create, again, that safe environment, and the spacing meets all of those requirements.
Well, again, I didn't realize that the parking area would include the east side of our park. I thought it was going to be strictly along El Camino. I, I didn't know it was going, going to be going around our park and taking over our park.
It's not intended to take over the park, but it is available parking in the downtown area.
Councilmember Condit?
I just want clarification regarding Whitmore Park. There is no plans currently to develop that park. I, I do share a lot of the same sentiments Vice Mayor Rhino has about that park. I would not want to develop it in any way, I just want to get on the record, there's no...
There are no city plans. There are individuals in the community who have thrown that idea out of redeveloping that park into something else, but that is not in any current city document. It's not in the general plan, it's not in any other document.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Mr. Pedia?
I just wanted to add that those lights along the Whitmore Park frontage will have power outlets that will help in special events in the street fair, so vendors can have power along there.
Okay, do you have any other questions? I'll open up to the public.
I don't.
Okay, this time, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this item?
John Warren, series. How many total parking spaces are available for the ACE train parking on the, would be the west side of the freeway, the El Camino side of the freeway? How many spots are there?
On the west side of the freeway?
Isn't that...
There won't be any on the west side.
It's going to be on the east side of the freeway is where the parking is?
Correct.
Okay.
You will not be able to access the platform from the west side, my understanding, because the business, public over there, the business owners over there did not want any access, so you will park on the east side, go underneath ninety-nine with, with improvements, so there will be parking along where the IV is coming down, and you see the, the toll slope for the ninety-nine. There will be diagonal parking along that, will, will take some of that area and create a whole row of parking along there, and then you will walk, go underneath the ninety-nine and then pop up onto the platform on the west side.
The platform will be on the west side?
Correct.
Okay, for some reason, I thought that the parking and the platform were both...
Well, we would have liked it that way, but again, there was business owners that didn't want it there, and that was the site plan that got settled on.
Okay, all right, so the parking is on our side of the freeway and the platform is on the other side of the freeway.
Well, the platform has to be on that side of the freeway because that's where the railroad tracks are, so...
Exactly, yeah, so how many parking spots are there?
Currently, or will, there will be after it's...
After it's completed.
Do you know, Mr. Wells, how many are on there?
Off the top of my head, I want to say it was two hundred-ish, but I, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Two hundred new, or two...
New, is what I'm recalling, but I...
So, so we would have two hundred new plus what we have in that downtown area?
That's a guess, you got to give me plus, minus, I haven't looked at that plan at all.
I mean, there is a site plan that you can see, where, where do we have that? Do you know?
I have it, I can put the information out.
Okay, I mean, can we put that on the website?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Jean Yeekly, series, I thought John would ask that question, and I'm going to ask, how far up will it go on El Camino? Is it going to go up there towards Kentucky Fried Chicken, or?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Two hundred parking spots, that's a lot.
Goes all the way to Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I think I have some of the same sentiments as Councilmember Rhino. Something that has bugged me and has bugged a few other citizens of series is, and I know this wasn't your guys' project, but the amount of lighting that's on ninety-nine, like in our, I guess, sphere of influence, is like extremely excessive. It's super nice because we do have lighting, but it almost looks like an airport, and I think I agree with Councilmember Rhino, we don't want to overdo it, and then go back and say, oh, well, there's too much light, and then have that waste there. I just want us to be conscious of that as well. Thank you.
The lighting, just, just for the record, the lighting that's on ninety-nine was done by Caltrans as a safety improvement because it's one of the highest accident incidents in the, in District Ten, I believe it is, so as a result of that, the lighting was put in, and that's why it's there, so... Any other questions? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for either direction change or...
Move to adopt resolution number two thousand twenty oh-five.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and agency member Condit.
Aye.
Council and agency member Dorosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino.
No.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairman Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four one.
Okay, we have no unfinished business this evening, we have no new business, so we will move to the public hearing. Item number fourteen, hearing to consider ordinance two thousand twenty dash ten fifty-five, amending in their entirety the following titles of the series municipal code, Title Six, Health and Sanitation. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. Try to operate two slideshows here. My apologies for the technical difficulties that we have encountered this evening, just double-check. All right, so we've got continued mountain that we're climbing of our municipal code, kind of taking a step back to Title Six of the municipal code, and this is primarily focused on one topic, which would be chapter six. So again, just a little history here, original discussion was back in August, as part of Group One, which included six titles. Those six titles were part, part down to four, so one, two, three, and four have been moved forward and approved, and the other two components of that, Group One B, on ten twenty-eight was separated out, that'd be Title Six and Eight. Since that time, Title Eight has been approved, and so we were back to Title Six for consideration. You can see there noted a few of the other changes we made through the process, and on eleven twenty-five, this was separated out for consideration in and of it, titled by itself. So that's the ordinance that's before you this evening for the consideration of Title Six. The primary focus of Title Six is chapter six point oh-four, in section specifically oh-three, dash C. And so here is the language that is proposed on the basis of the last council discussion for the storage of waste wheelers when they're not out for pickup. Waste wheelers and recycled containers shall be kept in... Waste wheelers and recycled containers shall be kept and maintained at a location upon the premises on the side yard of the house. Waste wheelers are not permitted to be stored in the driveway, in front of the garage, or in the front of the house. So that is the proposed language that was introduced to the council back on November 25th here for your council's consideration to take care of the final actions associated with this or give staff other direction. Um, this would be the public hearing. The first reading would be this evening, second reading on the next meeting of January 27th with a proposed effective date of March 1st. Available for any questions you may have.
Okay, um, Vice Mayor Rhino?
Well, I still don't agree that waste wheelers should be in the front, but when I read this, the way I read it, it can be on the premises, on the side yard of the house. So couldn't someone conceivably say that it's on their side yard, but it's just going to be, say, right behind the sidewalk? It's still the side yard. I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent is that it be up closer to the fence. But the way I read it, if I was going to leave my garbage cans out, I would think, oh, I just have to put them up on the side yard, right behind the sidewalk.
Side yard is defined, but if, if we could add a, a language, a setback outside of the front yard setback, which would make, ensure that it's at least 15 feet.
Does anyone else read it that way? I mean, that you could put it?
Yeah, as long as you put the set, beyond the setback, then you're, then that makes sure that-
Outside of the front yard setback, right, Tom? That from consistency standpoint, that ensures it's back at least equal with the garage for the most part.
I, I think we should add that because I was looking at it and it doesn't say it can't be kept on the sidewalk. But that will take care of that.
We do say that, yeah, but that would, that's an easy cleanup.
Yeah.
I would agree.
But even though I pointed that out, I'm still don't agree with the cans being out in front.
Any other comments?
I would prefer it out of sight.
Okay. This time I'll open it up to the public if anyone would like to comment on this. Okay. Anyone?
By under John Warren, Series, excuse me. The terminology is going to be outside of the setback?
Outside the set, beyond the setback.
Beyond the setback. How is John Q. Citizen going to know what his setback is? How is the average homeowner in the city going to relay to the homeowner what their setbacks are? Because each one's a little different.
Not, no, it's only unless you're in a, a PD, which has a special required setback. Most of them are per the city, um, standard for development, which might be, was it 10 or 15 feet from the, typically like the, the right of way or the back curb?
Alternative language, you could say on the side yard adjacent to the house would eliminate that concern as well, if you're worried about distance.
Yeah, if you, if you want to make it easy for that, because the house is sitting at the setback.
For the most part.
Most, very few builders will build the house further back than what the setback is. So your edge of the house is typically your setback, like 99% of the time.
But as John, my, my same question is, most of your citizens aren't going to know that.
Well, I know. So he just said he would add wording that would say adjacent to the edge of your house.
Thank you. I still would encourage you to put the waste wheelers behind the fence.
Don? Uh, don't worry about my garbage can. I took care of it and I put it in a place where nobody can see it. But now I've got a container out there that they gave me a ticket on for having a brand new air conditioner, three and a half ton, $100,000 in a box. It don't, it's not a trash car. It don't have a tarp on it. It has a brand new box. Now tell me how that is illegal. I, I just, I, I just can't understand it. I had bicycles and I come in here and told you that I had bicycles that my brother gave me in Ripon. There was five of them. I brought them home, I fixed them, and I gave it to the people around the corner that's got three or four kids. I mean, and every time something like that happens, here they come. And I've told you people too, right outside the window here, there's two garbage cans that's leaning up against a $10,000 place where you can put your garbage can. So it only takes about five minutes to put them two garbage cans in there and close the gate. Now how can you tell me to move my garbage cans whenever they're right out there in plain sight? And 15 people on my street, out of 20, has garbage cans out in the front. But they come to my house. They tell my wife, if you don't move your camper or don't pull the plug, we're going to move your people next door. This has been going on, Mr. Vera, for a long, long time and you know that. Me parking by the fire hydrant, me doing this, me doing that. And you, you know, treat me like you do the other people. That three and a half ton air conditioner now, if one of mine goes out, it costs me $3,750 and I sold it for $2,000 just to get rid of it. I, I don't understand.
Don, I, I, we're, we're, we're talking about the waste wheeler. Yeah, I, I don't know about your air conditioning, um, or air conditioning unit. I, I, I don't know how long it's been there, what?
Get a ticket for it and you'll know, 200 and some dollars.
Okay, but that's a separate item. We can, we can talk about that separately, but right now we're talking about waste wheeler locations. So, um, you know, I'd be happy to talk to you about your air conditioning.
Mine's behind and you don't have to worry about mine anymore. Mine's, mine's out of sight.
Okay.
Lee Brandt, Series. Uh, I'm with Linda and Chance as far as putting them, putting the waste wheelers behind, having them hidden. But I do have a question. If waste wheelers are left out front and, because there's, somebody comes by my house and they'll be hi, be by there tomorrow and they go through my recycles, okay, and they take them, they take whatever, you know, cardboard or whatever. Now is that, and my waste wheelers are on the street because my pickup's tomorrow. So if the waste wheelers are up against my house, is it my property? So if they come on my property to go through my garbage can, they can be arrested? I, you know what I'm saying?
It's technically trespassing. They're on your property without your permission, but that's a pretty difficult.
Yeah.
Make a turn to law enforcement.
Well, I know, but it, it seemed like we're just, you know, leaving a, you know, the door wide open for people to come through and go through your garbage can.
Well, and that'd end up on your property, which now to me would bother me even more.
But that is your responsibility.
If they take, if they take it and they go through my garbage can and they see a plastic bag that's full of dog poop they put off the side, they're not going to put it back in the can and I'm going to get blamed for it.
Well, then I would say put your garbage cans behind the fence then.
Right, well, I, I do on my house and it's fine. I'm just thinking about, you know, like my neighbors across the street, they have their cans out front.
And so people go through them out in front of their place?
Yeah, and it's in their yard and they're rentals, there's-
They don't care?
No.
But we can't hold, that is a nuisance and we can hold them as both the renter and the owner accountable for that nuisance.
Right, yeah, because they're, yes, so. Okay, no, I was just wondering, I'm, you know, I'm just curious because if you're, if it's up against your house, you know, it's open, you know, it's still your property. And I understand once it's out in the street, it's public property, correct?
Not necessarily, no. It's still illegal to go through, you go through your trash, go through your recyclable, unless you are the trash collector or the resident of the house. So if somebody's riding through on their bike and they go through your recyclable and take things out, that's against the law and it's against city ordinance.
Okay, which gets done all the time, so, okay, all right, thank you.
I mean, just because your car's parked in the right of way doesn't mean that somebody can take it.
Right, yeah, I, I understand. I was just curious, you know, if it's a, you know, because if it's up against your house, you know, it's still your property, but then once it's out in the street, it's still your property. So, okay, no, Mike answered.
I think he brought up something that I hadn't thought about, but now you potentially are going to hear from people who are upset because homeless people or whoever are going through the neighborhood are now up on their property. And are you, are you going to go out and confront them? Are you just going to let them be on your property going through your garbage?
Is, is that going on right now all through the city?
I have no idea. I'm just saying I didn't think of it until he brought that up. But I mean, I wouldn't like that. I wouldn't want someone coming up into my yard, but-
Right, but it, it becomes a choice that, you know, as a homeowner or renter, that if you have a garbage wa, waste wheeler and you don't want it, you know, to have the house look bad, you put it in the back. Or maybe you have a spot on the side with a setback that goes way back there. So I mean, I think we're just beating this with a dead stick. Mr. Wells, let me ask you. Does the current, um, municipal code require the garbage cans to be behind the fence today?
Yes.
Okay. And I walked through my neighborhood, which is Mr. Warren's, and I did a little poll and I counted at least 10 to 15 homes that would all be sighted and that was just in a little block. And, and I don't live in a bad neighborhood. We're now, and, and we're not, we're not, obviously, we don't have either the resources to go around the entire city and write all these people up, or we do and we're going to incite all these people who've been doing it because they're not supposed to. I guess I don't understand why at this point, when we have, we've had this on the books forever, that we now should change it and just start going after everybody. But that's my issue is, yeah, there's a few of you out here that have a problem with it, but the likes of the people that are out there that are doing it have no idea that this would be coming and we're just going to ticket. I mean, like I said, might have been, there'd be 15 people that'd be, get a ticket and I'm only talking just a little circular area. So it, you know, it, it's kind of like, like, you know, say what you mean and mean what you say. So if we're really going to keep it that way, then we're going to ticket everybody that does it. And when they come all back here, we're going to end up turning it over because everybody's going to say, you know what? I've been doing this for 20 years. So we're just trying, I'm just trying to be logical about and say, okay, as long as it's back up against the house, which is where most of these people have it, I don't notice it while I, I cite, but I do notice the homeless encampment and the trash that seems to be proliferation throughout our city. And with the code enforcement people that we have, I'd prefer to put them focused on that than somebody whose trash can is 25 feet away from the curb up against their house that you don't really, and aesthetically, I can live with. Okay, that's where I'm coming from. So, um, if, 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 if the edict of this council is they want to leave it the way it is and start ticketing everybody, that's fine. We, we can do that. And when all those people start coming here, then, then they can answer the questions as to, okay, why we've changed the, you know, started the enforcement. I'm just trying to be realistic in the way that we've been handling it right now for 20 years and all of a sudden now it's a huge problem. That, that's, that's my only point.
Well, yeah, the, the only thing I was thinking about, you know, we're trying to do a beautification in the city and like Linda was saying, you know, you get a homeless person or, you know, I, I don't, I don't mean to say homeless, but somebody come through the recycles, they just, they go up on your property and they leave a mess. Well, so much for the beautification. You know, I mean, but anyway, so I mean, and I, I understand where you're coming from. I mean, I, I totally do. I, I don't envy you guys one, one bit, you know, for this. And, you know, we're just beating the dead horse or whatever, however they're supposed to put it. You know, but anyway, I just say good luck.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to talk about this item?
I just want to make a comment, Jean Akeley, Vice Mayor Linda Rhino. She said something about, uh, she doesn't know if people are going through the garbage. Yeah, it is going, they are going through the garbage at night. And I've called several times. I just got, told the chief tonight that I'd called over the last week because some people are going through there. I don't know about anybody else's garbage, you know? I got a fence around my house, but I go out late at night hoping that they'll be gone, but they're not. The whole neighborhood lit up with dogs barking. I knew from the neighbor's dog, he only barks when something's going on and he barked for a long time. So I went out and they had a baby buggy and they were running down the street going through all the garbage cans. So yes, that does exist. I don't know how big a problem it is, but, you know, or what the citation for that is, but it, it should be something significant anyway to punish those people if they do get caught. But they are, Linda Rhino, they are quite a few people still doing that out in the neighborhoods.
So just for clarification, the homeless person is going on a non-garbage day up to the home and going through someone's trash? I could see it if it's down on the street and it's trash day and they go through it. That's, that's, that's another problem. But if you're telling me you're seeing homeless people draw, walk up into your driveway onto the side of your house and go through your trash?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I'm just saying she was asking about-
I know, but I'm hearing everyone say that by getting rid of the trash cans then the homeless people won't come up to their house. I, I, I don't see that as a problem. I see the homeless person going through the trash can when it's down on the street.
Right, that's exactly what I'm seeing.
But I don't see them coming up to the house.
Right, I, I don't know if they are. I haven't seen anybody go up to someone's house. The ones I'm talking about are only on the trash days on the pickups, the day, night before.
Okay.
So I just wanted to agree with, uh, Councilmember DeRocset that it should just be an option if, if your fear is that someone is going to come up to your home, um, then put it behind a fence. But if not, if it's clean and it's very minimal to sight, then I think you should leave it out. I live by myself on Caswell, which many of you know is a very highly trafficked area. And only on trash days have I seen people go through trash. I have never had someone come up to my side of the, so I also didn't know that that was a law. I didn't know, sorry. Um, but my trash cans are in like my RV parking area, not behind my fence because then that means I have to go through my garage, unlock my RV parking, open the entire gate to put two trash cans in, go back around, re-lock it. And so it's like a whole process, so I just have it on the side. And I've had neighbors that have said that my, I keep my yard absolutely meticulous. They've never had a complaint about any trash. And so I think if people are keeping up their yard and doing what they're supposed to, then it shouldn't be a problem. But if that is a fear of the public, then it should be an option because I agree with you, Mayor Vera. I mean, you can't just all of a sudden tell people, oh, well, this has been the law for 20 years and we just didn't enforce it. Surprise, because you're going to have a lot of angry people, especially if they're keeping it up the way that it should. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to adopt or to ordinance number 20201055, amending the entirety of the Title VI of the Series Municipal Code.
With the changes that?
With the changes.
So the noted change would be outside of the front yard setback adjacent to the house?
Right.
Outside of the front back adjacent to the house.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council and agency member Condit?
Aye.
Council and agency member DeRocset?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Rhino?
No.
Council and agency member Klein?
Yes.
Mayor and Chairman Vera?
Yes.
Motion passes three two.
Okay, item number 15, hearing to consider amending in their entirety the following titles of the Series Municipal Code, Title V, Business License and Regulations, and Title XII, Streets and Sidewalks.
Thank you, Mayor Vera. Get this slideshow going here.
All right, as we continue the municipal code, the next section this evening is a public hearing for Titles V and Titles XII, Business License and Regulations, Streets and Sidewalks. The council has conducted one, uh, item, or one discussion item on these two titles. This is now the public hearing where the document has been, I wouldn't call it finalized yet, but addressed the comments from council in the discussion, addressed those comments and are now in a more complete form for council and public hearing input before it comes back for adoption. So just a reminder of the grouping of, of the titles that we've got through. So with your vote, um, just now, um, Group One C, Title VI, is now mostly complete as I go through the second, second reading and then on to effective date. And Group Two is in progress. We've already held the public hearing on that. It's scheduled to come back. Here's the schedule for that. Here's the schedule for that, to come back on February tenth. And then this item that we're discussing this evening evening will be scheduled for a public hearing for adoption on March ninth. Any questions on our overall schedule and where we're at? Thanks, Tom, I appreciate the efforts here, trying to run two PowerPoints. So just a reminder of Title V, Business License and Regulations. There was quite a bit of movement from Title V. So we moved several things around from Title Nine into Title V. So the few that are mentioned there, fireworks sales, fortune-tailing, adult businesses, sale of vehicles, and cannabis business pilot program, they were moved from Title Nine to Title V. And the numbers there are the new, new title numbers. We did reorganize a little bit on the basis of the discussion to move items to their logical location. Again, another item, massage establishments, was moved from Title Six into Title V. And then the bulk of the changes here, that were really kinda new chapters, is the sidewalk vending, Chapter 517, as well as the mobile food vending was changed pretty substantially to be consistent with the sidewalk vending requirements of SB 946. As the council recall, we had a discussion to move previously 5.10, which is the dancing title, from Chapter Four, or Title Five to Title Eighteen, so that will be coming to you in a future title. And then missing from the discussion was Titles 523 and 524. We're not in that discussion, which is the charitable solicitations. Seeing what the other one was, I didn't write it down. Vehicles for hire. So those two items are now included in their language. It was essentially what was already in the existing code, just now formatted to match the current Title V. So one of the big discussion items for council was the regulatory function. It was included originally in our ordinance was the purpose of business license is for a, not for regulatory purpose, but a revenue purpose only. The draft that was provided from the city attorney had a regulatory function to that per council direction. We modified that language to say that it is for revenue purposes only, and the regulatory function is only to enhance those revenue portions. So that language was adjusted so that it's focused on the revenue collection app, action of business license. A new provision, as I put there on page ten, 5.02.04, changing the language to give the collector, in this case, that's defined as a city manager or another, the ability to deny a business license for health or safety. Currently do not have that ability. As talking through with the city attorney, provides a little bit of concern about when the city manager would exercise that legal right per the code. Would have to be a pretty unique situation, but this is one where I look for council direction on your comfort level of providing that out, or if you wanna provide some additional language or some other criteria of when you'd make that determination. But that is a change from the existing code to what is being recommended to give that option for the denial of a business license on a, on a defined health and safety issue. And want to stop at any point or just keep going?
Let's, let's.
Let's kind of address each one as we go along. So if I understand this, is this an item that would have gone through Planning Commission and potentially City Council, or is this, could be just the staff level approval?
Could be anything, the staff.
So if the staff level approval has approved a project and, and for health and safety reasons, let's say the city manager feels that there's a problem, he could deny it.
Correct.
Or she could deny it.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's different than what we have today.
Okay, well, my concern is it, is if, if this was something that was gonna usurp a Planning Commission decision, I would not be for it, but if this is not, but if this also could be a situation where it doesn't go to the Planning Commission, then I would say, okay, I, I could support it. I mean, I'm hopeful that the staff level person that's approving it realizes that there's a health and safety issue and doesn't allow it to occur, but.
The, the example that I would give that would justify this language would be the methadone clinic. Right, that had a, a concern that was probably worth a conversation. On the flip side, as a city manager, I'm a bit uncomfortable in terms of when I would use this language to stop something. So it is a wrestling point that, you know, I included it for, for the discussion because I wanted to get council direction, because it was something that is in the model ordinance that our, our, our legal team is using, but there is an uncomfort from staff level. If a purpose for business license is a revenue function, you know, giving ministerial ability to veto something, it could be.
Can you reword it to where if there is an issue or concern with health and safety, it has to requ, uh, uh, obtain approval from the city council?
Could, could. Well, I bet, that's probably a more comfortable position, at least for a city manager going out on a limb. You've gotta come, make sure he, he or she has the support before they're gonna pull that.
Well, I think it's only fair to people that have come to the body as opposed to, don't take this the wrong way, dictatorship.
Absolutely, and that's again why I'm bringing it up, because I, you know, Tom, this is something I was very uncomfortable with, with other cities on how they would, how you would make that determination, that, that without some built-in criteria, it's pretty innocuous, health and safety of what, what falls into that criteria. So, you know, we included it in there because it was in that draft, but from a city manager perspective, I'd be comfortable deleting it, but it's, it's a policy decision.
Councilmember Klein?
No, I was, I was gonna say, till you added the other thing. I, I do agree with the mayor that if the Planning Commission has made, made a decision on something, but yet staff still think that there is a, a health or safety issue on it, then I, I think that the staff should bring it to the city council for approval or denial. You know, with what you added at your second part is where I was trying to lead to. So I, I do agree that, you know, if, if, if the, the body decides to do something and, and you further still think there's an issue, that, you know, it takes the burden off staff and it would bring it back to the council.
Yeah, the intent, I believe, and Tom, maybe we can talk to this, was not for items that have already gotten approval from a planning commission or council. This would be an item that is, does not have any other approvals, is just moving straight to.
Purely administrative.
Purely administrative, moving straight to business license, is not intended, and we could clarify that language if necessary. It's not intended to handle those situations that have already sought and received other approval, because that's, those are pretty straightforward from business license. You meet all the criteria, all the, all the conditions that are approved by the planning commissioner, city council. That's pretty straightforward. This is, the, the purpose here was to deal with those situations that did not go through an approval process.
We haven't done anything like that before, though? I mean, wouldn't there be a heads up?
Never. To my knowledge, at least as long as I've been here, a business license has never been denied. It, you know, I mean, been denied for technical reasons, but not a health and safety issue. We haven't, that language does not exist in our existing code.
So I think that, I think the way that it covers us is anything that has not received the approval from the Planning Commission, that the city manager or city staff has some concerns that there could be health and safety issue, it requires the approval, a public hearing and approval of the city council.
Would it have to be a public hearing, Tom, or just?
Well, that's what we're doing if it's brought to us, right?
Not necessarily. I mean, a new business item doesn't necessarily have to be a public hearing.
But I would think that we owe it to the public to be able to comment on something like that.
I would agree with the mayor.
Yeah, it's just a matter of noticing.
Whether it's a public hearing specifically or not.
Well, I call this a public hearing, so.
Yeah, the reason why I question public hearing is just the noticing requirements for a public hearing are much more onerous than a new business item, right? The noticing in the newspaper and the whole steps that we have to go through a public hearing are very different.
Well, I still think we should have to go through a, a public hearing noticing, because obviously it's gonna be a controversial issue, and it's one that I think we should let everybody weigh in on, so.
I would agree.
But would we still have a requirement of three hundred feet that you have to notify, like you would in a planning commission?
That's a requirement for any public hearing.
But if we look at the methadone example in this case.
Three hundred feet wouldn't have been enough.
I know, but at least we would.
It would have got the notice out, correct.
So. But, but that went to the Planning Commission, though, right?
Which one?
The methadone?
No.
No, okay, yeah. That's right, because we didn't have that provision.
We didn't have that, provision did not exist.
So that's how I, I would like to see it, but, you know, I'll, I'll look at the direction of everybody else.
Yeah, it is a public hearing, so you could hold off and bring that item after the public hearing and give us clear direction if you'd like.
Okay.
So that was 5.02.04. Then the 5.02.08, again, another change here relative to the renewal. The way the language was drafted was a bit different. We've, we've edited this language to be more consistent with what our existing practice is. When someone's asking for renewal of a business license, it's more ministerial. The previous language it was in the discussion required basically the same application process. So someone was duplicating those efforts all over again, which is different than our current practice. So just wanted to call that attention, that is different language today than was in the discussion item. But this language matches our current practice. All right, then 5.06, this came up the last meeting, in terms of the patrol services. So this is a, a security guard company and the approval of, approval of uniforms. That language is actually in our existing code, so this is consistent with that existing code. And that didn't cha, didn't change. Chapter 510, pretty significant changes there relative to mobile food vending. Just bring that to your attention, per the direction of the city attorney. With the new sidewalk vending law for SB 946, basically the only thing that falls under mobile food vending moving forward would be anything with a motor. So under the existing code, mobile food vending covered, like the guys with an ice cream bike and other things of that nature would fall under that category, but today those would fall under sidewalk vending. So that, that kind of little different nomenclature and key to show the difference between mobile food vending and then the sidewalk vending. So again, Chapter 510, that's where the, the mobile food vendors, and then 517, the sidewalk vending. Pretty significant new concept there with the language that we discussed last time. That is now a bit incorporated with council's comments as well as the staff comments. Probably, maybe we'll keep going, if you let me know if you have any questions. So then 518.
I, I have a question. So how is the ice cream truck different than the guy on a bike? I mean, I understand that there's a motor involved, but he's not being stationary. He's not being any more stationary than an ice cream truck.
I defer the city attorney. We had the same conversation, and they basically said, under that sidewalk vending, the, the difference is the, how that vehicle moves and where it should be regulated. So the ice cream truck is under the mobile food vendor, and the guy on a bicycle is under sidewalk vending.
Is, is that the interpretation of our attorney, or is that a state law?
It's the new state law.
Okay.
That's SB 946.
Councilmember Klein?
You know, if you're done with 517, I have a couple of questions on Chapter thirteen. Now, I can send it, I can send it to you in an email or anything like that, but in reading, rereading this thing, you have a, an option on, I think, page fifty-six where it requires a chauffeur's license for a taxi cab. But then when you look on fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and another one on sixty, it states a commercial driver's license and then a regular driver's license. I mean, there's a lot of inconsistencies in there. So to operate a taxi cab, it is a chauffeur's license, because you are doing, you are moving passengers from point A to point B. And if you're looking for what I said, skip fifty-six, but go to page fifty-eight and go to letter F, a copy of the applicant's California Commercial Driver's License. I have a commercial driver's license, but I am not allowed to handle chauffeurs because I do know how to have a, a chauffeur's license.
But this is part of the application process, so all of those items are required for an application for a driver taxi permit. So all of those items, A through M.
No, that's correct, but it says, it says a commercial driver's license. With their driving a taxi cab, they have to have a chauffeur's license.
We can confirm.
No, I mean, I can email them to you and tell you those, because like I say, they're in here. You know, fifty-eight F, fifty-nine's got the same thing on A three.
They're all, they're all the same requirements for the permit, so yeah, it's, it's a find and replace.
Okay, move on.
All right, five eighteen, trying to remember what that was off the top of my head. And there was, Councilwoman Klein on five sixteen, we got that one edit. Actually, that's wrong, wrong chapter, sorry, my apologies. That was in fifteen that you were referring to. Apologies, five eighteen. So this is under the garage sale component, so under five eighteen oh-three. We've had an issue in the past, primarily really rooting to change in use. So there's proposed language here in an item B to allow the city manager some discretion on the number of licensed, number of garage sales per year. So in the past, it's been very explicit, no more than two yard sales per year, garage sales per year. We've had a couple of situations over the last couple of years where some, where a tenant was in a house, they'd had their two yard sales, and then the owner reoccupied the house and then went to have a yard sale and then would be prohibited. We also had a situation where there was someone who'd passed away, and the family came in to clean the house out, but there'd already been two yard sales in that particular year, and the family was gonna have an estate sale, and we don't have, it was explicit, two or more, and there was no provisions for, I mean, in that particular situation is a pretty easy answer, I thought, from the city manager to say, oh, that makes sense. If they had to, and then someone passed away, you're gonna have an estate sale. That seems like a logical exception to the rule. So we drafted this language, subject to council thoughts, to just give a little bit of window there, but obviously something that can't be abused, but it's pretty unique situations, but it has happened a few times in the last couple of years. We thought it was worth a council consideration on that particular language, so. Any thoughts, and we're open to revisions or thoughts along those lines?
I'm okay with allowing that provision, but I don't wanna have somebody having a garage sale every week.
And that's the purpose, for limiting it to two. You know, and you, you'd have to be able to demonstrate that clear difference that, hey, there's a unique circumstance here that generates that need, and it has to get cleared, you know, approved by the city manager. Okay, so on to five twenty-two, the cannabis. There was a little bit of a gap in our ordinance, it appears, that we're trying to trace back. The council was really clear on outdoor cultivation and not allowing it. The existing ordinance is not as clear as we'd like it to be. It's not in the language today, but I believe council is comfortable with us, outdoor cultivation being prohibited. I wanna make sure that's comfortable, we'll build that language in for adoption, but that language right now is a little, not as clear as we'd like it to be. We'd like it to be really specifically clear, but it's not in the language as clear as we'd like. So looking for council direction or concurrence that, yes, outdoor cultivation should be prohibited.
Are any comments?
I agree. So I do have a comment, though, in looking at the permitting and stuff. Cannabis business permit, it is, it just refers to a medical cannabis business, but I didn't see anywhere where the permits allow for adult use.
What was it, where, what section were you medical?
I, I'm on Chapter twenty-two, page one forty-seven, says cannabis business, but it doesn't refer to adult use. If you go like the fourth line, third section down, it says cannabis business permit.
Correct.
But it doesn't refer to anything that says adult use cannabis. All it does is refer to a medical use.
Yeah, so the medical should be removed from all those, it looks like we missed it in two spots. So medical will be removed, so it is just one. It's cannabis business.
Okay.
Covers both, but we'll, we'll clarify that. Then again, five twenty-four, five twenty-three, those sections were added back in. They're consistent with the existing language, there's no changes from the existing code other than updating it for current structure and, and language to match legal requirements. We wanna stop there, get public comment on Title V, or just go through Title XII?
No, let's, let's stop there.
Okay.
Is there any questions of the council before I open it up to the public? Okay, at this time, is there anyone on the public that would like to comment on any of these items?
Yeah, Gene Akeley. My concern's on the sidewalk vending around series. It's not at a scale that we can measure yet, but this coming summer, it could get a little bit more increased. And, and I asked the city attorney before at a council meeting, and they said they were gonna be able to get the changes on what they can and can't do. Where will we be able to see that, online, or the attorney can explain that now, or what?
It's online now.
Is it?
This draft version is, is part of the agenda package.
For the street vending and what's allowed and what's not allowed? For the street vending and what's allowed and what's not allowed?
The council is considering tonight's public hearing. The draft language is, is there, you can download it, you can see it on the city's website. If you'd like, we can give you a copy here this evening.
Okay, thank you.
And just to point out too, it's not necessarily what the council wanted, but state law required.
Okay. All right, do you have the direction you need then?
So is there any other, kind of going back to those? So we are comfortable with business license function with that language? The collector will add language that it's planning commission or city council or just city council?
Just city council.
Just city council.
Yeah, just city council is fine.
Yep, no problem with the, we'll put the language for public hearing and that type of thing. Just making sure we've got those items covered, that in any other direction. Yes, I think we're good there. Right, so on to title twelve, relatively straightforward from the discussion item on streets and sidewalks. There really wasn't any significant changes, just some edits and comments that were necessary to reflect current law. So I think that one is relatively straightforward. We, again, we'd moved traffic signal benefit districts from title twelve to title sixteen, so we'll talk about that in just a minute. Other than that, this title appears to be relatively close and ready to go, but look for council direction.
Question. It'd be chapter nine, page thirty. Number C. No person shall place a deposit or dump or cause a place to deposit or dump of any dirt, rock or gravel, blah, 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 in any portion of a travel streets or highway, since we do have alley, shouldn't alleyways be included?
I'm sorry, which, which page are you on again?
It's page thirty, item C.
Yeah.
So twelve oh eight C, twelve oh eight oh one C, is that what?
Yes. Sorry. Shouldn't alleyways be included?
If it's not included in street, we should.
If it's not, if it's not defined already, we'll verify that definition. It may be defined to include. We can just say right, city right of way would likely cover that, but we'll, we'll verify that. Anything else?
Then my next question is, and I'm bringing this up, let's go to page thirty-one. Twelve oh eight oh three, zero, item D. Pause it on a sidewalk. Sales of ware goods, you know. Put it bluntly, we have a retailer in town that puts stuff on his, you know, sidewalk and they're not obstructing. It's been doing it for years. So how do we include, include that in there?
So obstructing sidewalks, so twelve oh eight oh three. You said D or D? B as in boy or D as in?
D as in dog.
So what are you wanting to include?
Well, you got, you got businesses that will put an A-frame sign up there.
So A-frame, A-frame signs would be.
Okay, but what I'm, what I'm, what I'm leading to is you got Mr. Delhart. It's been in business here fifty years, okay? He's put one or two beds out on, on the sidewalk, they're not obstructing anybody. Person in a wheelchair can get by him, but yet it's, but it's been an on and off, again, you know, obstacle with certain individuals in this city. So how can we put language in there to allow, you know?
I don't believe this would be the place you'd want to put anything like that associated with a business operation. You'd want to do that under zoning relative to signage and those type of things and anything. Because there are some provisions, Tom, correct me if I'm right, related to sidewalk vending that allows for significant amount of that outdoor display that we have to be very consistent with.
And we haven't got there yet.
It's currently in title five. Tom, you want to add a little bit to that?
Yeah, Councilman Klein from the finance division seat, thank you, Letitia. I think some of that that you're suggesting is, is covered in that sidewalk vending ordinance that would allow the provisions to allow businesses to store some of their immediate wares in front of the sidewalk and not block, not cause any obstructions to the sidewalk. So I think that that's covered in the sidewalk vending ordinance.
So that'd be in this chap, chapter five seventeen.
Chapter five seventeen, okay. I just, you know, I mean, it's been going on for years and, and it's an issue. Depends on who wants to complain about it.
But SB nine forty-six changed the rules on us and that's, that's the significant change.
I just, I, I mean, because I just want to make sure it was covered.
Yep, and that's the change that title seventeen is reflective of that.
Okay.
Anything else in title twelve?
I don't.
That's all that we have, the public hearing.
I'll open it up to the public, is anyone on, would like to talk about title twelve, streets and sidewalks? Nope, all right, with that, we, oh, you did, okay.
Gene Yankley. On the streets, what are we covering, the parking part of it or, or what does it consist of exactly?
Public rights away, construction and the public right of way, deposit of oil or other petroleum products, excavation, street trees, privately owned and maintained roads, visible obstructions at public intersections, obstruction of public streets and sidewalks and underground utilities. Those are the nine chapters in streets and sidewalks.
So obstruction of streets, would that be the way that people are parking in the courts?
That's already covered by the vehicle code and we already covered that earlier.
Okay, all right, thank you.
This is more along the lines of construction and those type of things, people putting things in the roadway that would alter the access to the road, that type of thing.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll move on to the discussion items then, item number six.
There's a public hearing, actually, yeah, we don't need any directions, I'm sorry. So we're good with that item and we'll bring that back. Just want to talk about the date for adoption. So per the schedule, this item, group three B would come back on March ninth for adoption and that would be with title, the next group would be group four and potentially group five if we can get there. So just want to make sure there's no issues with that schedule. Bringing this back for adoption on March ninth. When we adopted this schedule, we recognized when we do this public hearing, that's when we council get, council direction as to when it would come back for adoption. So everyone's comfortable with that approach?
Yes.
See some heads nod inside, we're good, thank you.
Do you want to jump into this one before the park project?
Are we doing time wise?
It's fine. Item number sixteen, upcoming park improvement projects.
All right, a little, little break from the mini code, I was on a roll there. I thought we were just going to keep powering through mini code and forgot we had scheduled this. Scheduled this in front just in case these items went a little long or make sure that there was an opportunity if council wanted to take a, take a break or not. So park improvement projects that we're currently working on. So council may recall, in twenty sixteen, we adopted a parks master plan. In that parks master plan, it identified really two of the main parks that were yet to be completed that we needed to move forward on, and that was East Gate Park and Lions Park. It also identified some improvements at Strawberry Fields Park. The design concepts have been completed, they started in different years, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and they're now moving through the design process, getting close. And we'll talk about schedule here at the end of the meeting, or the end of this item. We're getting close to soliciting bids for these projects. We felt it was necessary to bring to council to just kind of check in with where we're at on the delivery of these projects and the, the park components. So we'll go through each of those and feel free to ask any questions that we have as we, as we move through each of these. So we'll start with East Gate. So this is the concept plan that was created in twenty, twenty seventeen, late twenty seventeen. One thing to note, right where the one is there, kind of on the left side of the screen, that portion of the park is not owned by the city. So there is a privately owned piece of that park to the north that is not currently owned. It's part of a future development project, most likely. It would be required to be dedicated at that point in time. So that part of the park cannot be constructed at this point in time, which is hence why the overall schematic of the park was built to be done in multiple phases. So the red outline is what's anticipated to be the area of construction within phase one and that's what we're working on the design for right now. The focus of that area is overall site grading, getting the dirt and the earth work to balance. Hardscape improvements are the primary focus, i.e. sidewalk curbs, gutters, sidewalks and things necessary to build the playground areas, install trees that could, you know, take a little while to longer, minimize, minimize the landscape improvements to minimize that landscape requirement and the requirement for maintenance and then have it phaseable for future construction. So that's the focus for East Gate, is trying to get that out to bid. The, the goal would be to finish up the design this spring, be under construction this summer. The funding for the East Gate project would be from developer impact fees. We've tried to phase the park improvements such that we don't overwhelm our parks department with bringing on new park landscape improvements to maintain. And so this is kind of the next timeframe of bringing on a new park every other year if possible. So Neal Park was the last one that was completed, completed, this is kind of the next one in the, in line. Again, trying to minimize those landscape improvements so that we don't overwhelm the parks department staff. We've been building longer maintenance periods in for the contractors so that they maintain it for a little bit longer than we have done in the past. So it's a, we try to get it so that it hits a, a logical conclusion, i.e. a six month timeframe so it hits a new fiscal year, so that if we need to make some staffing adjustments in the parks department for maintenance purposes, we're able to do that fiscal years rather than have parks come online in the middle of the, of the year. So any, any questions on East Gate?
Can we go back to that? So all at the north part, are those round things trees?
Yes.
So those are all going to be trees and there's not going to be any kind of plantings around them, just trees?
For the most part around the perimeter is trees, the landscaped areas are in and around some of the, the ultimate landscape areas are in around the playground areas. But again, we're going to minimize that, put the irrigation in and minimize those landscape improvements in this first phase.
Well, how minimal, because we know we have issues.
As minimal as we possibly can.
Okay, we're not, we're not going to do like we did over at Neal Park where we have all the landscaping.
Park was completed, right, and this is a first phase. We're trying to minimize, one, keep our costs down, two, keep our maintenance costs down. We're trying to minimize the amount of landscape material is in. But trees, we would like to get planted so they provide the benefit of shade and everything, get them in sooner rather than later, when you put the trees in, you want to put the whole irrigation system in or as most of it, so it's easily extendable.
Well, I understand that, I just want to be sure we don't wind up in the same situation as we did at Neal where I think we, we, some of us on the council saw that there was more landscaping than we thought there should be. As, as far as I'm talking about plants and.
That's why.
Weeding and all of that. So by looking at this, how can I tell how much is going to be the landscaped area?
Tell us how much you want and we'll, that's what we'll do. Are you saying zero, we'll put zero.
I thought you told me we couldn't do zero.
Ultimately, we can't do zero because we got to meet state by drought tolerant issues. But for a phased project, yes, we can do much more minimal because it's phased.
Well, no, I, I want, I, I like the idea of the trees because they do need to mature and everything. I'm just talking about the landscape planner area where we put all of the little bushes.
If, if the council says don't install any of those right now, begin, because it's a phased project, we can get away with that as a phased project, this completed project, we would not be able to.
But if we said not to do that and you're just going to put the trees around it, then does that mean you have to go back and tear something up to put in landscaping?
No, we would likely just put in bark or something other that's minimal to maintain in those areas.
Artificial turf?
No, we wouldn't put in artificial turf. Artificial turf is too hot for most folks to be walking on it and it's too expensive and it has to be replaced. Those areas, it would be ultimately landscape areas, we would just put in bark or something like that to minimize the maintenance if council's uncomfortable with moving forward with landscape.
I am, be- because again, I heard you also say that you'll try to time it so it's a budget so we know if we need to have more parks maintenance people, so.
We do.
Okay.
That's a yes, we absolutely do.
Okay.
We have less parks workers today than we had in nineteen eighty-five with several hundred acres more in park.
Okay. So I would be okay with doing the minimal and making sure you get all your trees in so they can mature, but I can't see putting landscaping in when we already have an issue of maintaining what we have.
That's why we're asking. But we can recognize we can't do the part, the trees around the, to the left of that screen because we don't own that property yet.
Right.
Just making sure.
May I ask, when you say minimal, are you talking fifty percent less of what he's got here now?
Well, I think what he said that there is a possibility we could just do bark.
Council's uncomfortable with any landscaping, again, because it's a phased project, we can do that.
But you'd eventually put landscaping in.
What?
Would you eventually put landscaping in?
Unless council decided not to.
What if you just put a bunch of bark, because what I see when there's just, when there's just a bunch of bark, though, then the bark gets kicked around. If you had some landscape in there, then that might deter somebody from, you know, walking through that, thinking it's a walkway or.
Parks are a lot easier to maintain than planter beds with weeds and those type of things.
I would rather see bark kicked around on a walkway at a minimal than having weeds that are taller than the plants in massive quantities in landscape areas. And that happens in our parks, it does. Or it, it did.
Over by Mayhensler, we took those trees out, would we put bark in those things? Poles?
Ultimately, we hope to replant the trees there.
But did we put bark in those?
No.
And we didn't put bark in them?
Don't believe so. Talking on.
Fowler.
Fowler slash council. That is a project hopefully for the next fiscal year.
Can I make a suggestion, since this has been like fifteen years in the making? Can we just build the park and do it minimalistically and if we want to come back and put landscaping in there, we can?
Yes.
Does that work?
Residents need their park.
Absolutely, and that's why we're, we're here, we want to get this built.
Thank you.
Comfortable, everybody's good? All right, so Lions Park, similar situation, so this property is fully owned by the city. It's in a kind of a partial excavation for a storm drain basin. The phase one is similar in nature, trying to build the playground area. I know it's a little hard to, to see this, but the north, just kind of to the left of your screen, the area that we're focused on is really just there at the, the knuckle of Peter John Way and that is where we would do the grading to build the flat area on top, build the bottom part of that storm drain basin and install a playground area in that circle area with a slight concrete. Ultimately, there'd be a walkway all around the facility with two basketball courts and a baseball diamond, but all we're anticipating at this point is the phase one, similar situation. We're just focused on the grading to get the site plan in place. Hardscape improvements necessary to serve that playground area, minimal to no landscaping improvements and just ease the construction for future phases. So that's the overall concept.
What's the, what's the dotted highlighted line mean?
That's the phase one, that's what would be done with this project.
No, the, the jagged line. You're going to actually go out and build it off of that, are you going to stake it that way?
Yeah, it's partially already built that way, so you just have to grade it in order to move that dirt up on top so the slope is all built before we build.
So, so this basin, if I'm looking at it, it shouldn't show the contours down below then? That's not correct.
Yeah, it's not graded like that today, that's what we would grade it to.
Okay.
Got to move dirt, we had to do earthwork to get the flat area to build the park area. It's not, it's not graded to that today.
And what was the reasoning why we've changed that?
The original concept was a little bit different and they had the playground back in the corner. We wanted to have the playground a little more accessible to the parking area where people would park along Peter John Way and easier accessible to the neighborhood so that it wasn't tucked back in a corner and had better visibility.
Good, I know this might be a stupid question, but obviously the existing storm drainage for the subdivision is going somewhere else and then it's going to be rerouted to here?
Most of it goes here already, so this would actually improve.
Okay, that's right, it is, it's already, okay.
This actually improves the basin configuration and makes it more, more efficient as a land use for that dual use that it would be as both a storm drain basin and a park.
And memory serves me correctly, we did not flip the location of that because it would open up the EIR?
There was a number of factors, as I recall, plus we have a well site up in that north and west corner and a number of other factors based on that roadway over on Rainbow Lane as well.
And the reason I bring that up is because if you remember, we're putting the basin up against where our residents are while the people that are not in our city limits get the park amenities on their side. So the thought should have been, it should have been flipped so that the basin is on the other side and the park amenities on, close to our residence, anyway.
That explanation was done a long time ago.
Yeah, I remember, long time ago.
We tried to minimize those costs for grading to get the improvements for the park.
I just think it's kind of ironic that you actually have a line here, because I know you're not going to build it like that.
It will be, I mean, old. It will be, I mean ultimately, you want to have a grass area down there at the bottom so you could potentially put a soccer field in there, but it won't look just like that.
The line's not going to go like this.
No, no.
Anyway.
You can, you can go harass the design engineer if you like. I can give you a, you already have.
I can give you crap. That's alright.
I didn't design it. I know. I didn't even approve it, right Daniel? Blame Daniel. He hasn't approved it yet either. Any questions? Any thoughts? Alright, so again, this one's a little bit behind East Gate in terms of timing to get to construction. So we'd anticipate this one being. Ready to, to, to bid in summer for construction, fall-ish is the current thought. Based on if the council changes any of those priorities at the end, conclusion of this item. So we good there? Move on to the last one. So last one here, Strawberry Fields Park. So this is an existing park. So this is an aerial of the existing park area. You can see the restroom there is in the middle of that area. You go to basketball court and a very small playground area. On the basis of lots of complaints and issues with the maintenance of that restroom. The concept was created to eliminate that restroom. So back to the parks, parks master plan. For neighborhood parks, there's only two locations in town where we have a restroom and a neighborhood park. So that would be Roding Heights, which also has tennis courts, which makes it a little bit different than a neighborhood park. And then here, it's the only location where you have a restroom and a neighborhood park. The theory goes. That it's in the neighborhood. You don't want to invite the whole community into that park. It is there built for the neighborhood. And that you're not having that attractive nuisance that restrooms have become. And you're only putting restrooms in those community parks, i.e. Smyrna Park, Whitmore Park and those areas where you have potential for large gatherings. So the concept here was to remove that restroom. Here's another sight view, side view of the, the playground area and the restroom. And this concept would just be to remove that existing restroom, which creates a pretty significant maintenance challenge for our public work staff. And then to replace that with a playground area and the minimal landscaping necessary to get that to fit. So that's the concept. It's really that simple. The funding for this is from the West Point Assessment District. It is proposed to be constructed with some improvements to the medians along that area. We would be putting in some rock and other hardscape to minimize the landscape maintenance. Requirements of those areas that are maintained by a lighting and landscaping district. So those projects would go together. With this proposed improvement and with the landscaping of the median.
Remember when we were talking about the roundabout and there was going to be money left over?
Correct. That's what would be used here. We didn't use any of it for the roundabout. Zero for the roundabout.
Okay. And as you, and I don't remember the conversation the same. That I was against removing the restroom. Because I've heard from people who live in that area, because that's my district. That they have concerns because there are a lot of older people. That use the park. They walk around it. There's people with small children and granted. It's a neighborhood park, but when you have a two or three-year-old child. And they need to go to the bathroom, you can't normally get them home quick enough. So. To the people I've spoken to, they don't understand why we would take it away when it's there. And I understand that there's an issue with vandalism, but we have vandalism. Even if we don't have a bathroom, we have vandalism in parks and we're going to continue to have vandalism in parks. And I think. We have the restroom there. We should leave the restroom there instead of tearing it out. And I think we also, you and I also talked about. The possibility of putting a walking path around that park. Is that on here?
There is a partial path around the perimeter. It is not currently on there based on those monies not going far enough with those other improvements. It connects to the sidewalk along the frontage. It does not loop all the way around the park.
Okay. And we don't have money to do that or it's not possible to?
Not currently, no.
We don't have the money to do that. So if we didn't tear out the restroom, would we have money to do that?
If we didn't build the playground?
No. I didn't say that. I said if we didn't.
Where does the playground go?
I don't know. I'm not a designer. But there's a park there. Why couldn't you put?
The demo costs are relatively inexpensive in the grand scheme of things. The costs are the playground.
Okay. So you're saying if the restroom was left there, that there cannot be a playground?
Not without removing trees and doing some complete site redesign.
Site redesign from what you've already had designed here?
Correct.
Okay. Because again. I will say, you and I had this discussion and you remember it differently than I do. And I remember saying initially and continuing to say that we shouldn't get rid of the bathroom.
We'll just agree to disagree.
Uh, that's right. We will. And those are my comments about Strawberry Fields.
Any other comments?
I'd agree with the vice mayor regarding the restroom.
I'm, I'm probably a hundred and eighty degrees from that. But I, I mean, I didn't give him any direction, but. I, I see it nothing but. A potential for homeless. And I mean, I don't know how much we spend on the maintenance of it. I, I'm sorry, but I've yet to be in any. Nice public restroom in any park that we've had. Over time, they get vandalized. They look terrible. And most people don't want to use them. And if it is truly a neighborhood park, again, the thought would be. You, you know, the neighborhoods use it. Now, if, if you want to keep it there, that's fine. I, I, I would kind of ask one question. I know that. There's been issues in the past when we've had community gardens and other things about making. The citizens that use it pay for the water and other things. And how, how does this work with the sewer and the water? Do we, do we assess?
The lighting and, it's in the lighting and landscaping district here. So it's covered, it's covered there under that cost, but. But the LLD, I will say the LLD is upside down, right? I.e. it's costing us more to maintain that lighting and landscaping district than we have money for.
So can we raise that?
Lighting and landscape districts, is that true for? Is that the only one?
All of them.
Okay. So, so let's not signal out the bathroom at Strawberry Fields.
It's, I'm, I'm just saying.
It's all of the lighting and landscape districts.
There's, there's only one true district, but there's zones within that district and all of which have difficulties. Revenues are less than expenses. And this is one of those that the expenses, one of those primary expenses is the restroom maintenance.
But my ultimate comment is, you know, if you, if you want to leave the park, I mean, I. I don't have any heartburn with it, but I, I just see it being a problem area personally.
It has been attempted to be burned many, many, many times. Unfortunately, that's what people like to do in this particular restroom is light it on fire or attempt to light it on fire.
And again, we have. We have issues with. Things being vandalized at every single park that we have in Series. Every single park. I look at the report we get from, from Mr. Thomas and there's always vandalism. So. You're, you're not going to get rid of that, but why should? The people who moved into that subdivision that are paying that money. And that park and that bathroom were there for them. And so now we're just going to take it away. And again, it's an issue for, like I said, from people that live in that area, that if you take little Johnny down there and he's three years old. And all of a sudden, he's got to go to the bathroom and they live three blocks away. Well, that may not be a big deal for us. But a three-year-old it is. Or. There apparently are some senior citizens that walk around there that also use that facility.
Mind me making a suggestion. Is there any way that we can try to notify the residents and have some type of a, you know?
Neighborhood meeting?
Form?
Sure.
And let them chime in because maybe there's a few of them that want it and there's. A boatload of people that don't. I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying. But why don't we explore that option? You know, because who knows? I mean, I'm not, I'm not near that park, so I don't know if there's any drug deals or anything going down. As a result of that. I mean, and again, I don't, I'm not insinuating that. I'm just saying typically. Structures like that I've seen have problems, but if the residents want it, I don't have a problem leaving it.
And when you have that, I would like to attend as well.
Of course.
I mean, it's only been, what, fifteen years since we've got to them? If we have to wait a couple more weeks, a month or whatever, we're probably alright.
Just get his time to get there.
Yeah.
Rest of the council agree with that direction?
I can agree with, with that instruction, but I'm, I'm with Vice Mayor Rhino. I, I'd brought it up before that neighborhood parks should have a restroom. For the simple reason you'd take your three-year-old grandkid with you and they got to go. So. Uh, I can, I can follow that direction that the mayor says have a neighborhood park. I mean, have them, have them, let's talk about it.
You're saying all neighborhood parks?
That's a big change. Wait a minute. I'd brought that up before. Okay. I told you my concerns. Okay. I didn't make it mandatory. But I told you that I did. I know, I know. We've had this discussion. So, yes, I would like to see it, but feasibility, money-wise, no. Okay. I understand that part.
No, I was just trying to clarify.
Okay. I, we, we've had that discussion.
Well, I don't want to go down that path of three of you guys want to keep the park, Glenn, let's just keep the park. We don't need to ask.
Keep the bathroom, you mean?
I mean, the bathroom, sorry. So I don't, please don't write that. I'm getting rid of the park. I'm not, I'm not saying that. Um, do you want to keep, you, so these three want to keep the bathroom. So why don't you make changes to keep the bathroom? There's no sense in us going through that if three of them are going to want to keep the bathroom. If it wasn't a Freudian slip, I didn't mean to say park. Okay.
So obviously with that change, the schedule, Strawberry would obviously change. We'll adjust and shift that out.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Any other things before I ask anybody in the public that would like to comment? Are we good with that? Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on anything that you'd heard about the parks?
John Warren Series, I just had a question. And I'm not familiar with the park system within the city, even though I've lived here many, many years. How many of our parks have a bathroom in them?
Two, is it?
Something that would.
Four total.
Or have a bathroom in there?
Oh, I'm sorry, five. So the three regional parks, or regional, which would be River Bluff, Smyrna. And Whitmore. And then two neighborhood parks, Roding Heights. And this park we're talking about, Strawberry Fields. Am I missing one, Jeremy?
Where is Strawberry Fields at? Just to make me familiar.
It's on the west side of town. Hackett, south of Whitmore.
By Blake or Kinzer?
By Blake or Kinzer, just down the street from there.
Oh, okay.
South, south of Blake or Kinzer?
Next to the elementary school.
Just a, a general question. At nighttime, when generally there's a lot of people not at parks. Does someone go around and lock up those bathrooms or are they open twenty-four seven?
They're locked.
They're locked. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
From Series, as a person with three small children that utilizes our parks very frequently. Um, I wanted to say with the landscaping. It adds to the aesthetic of the park, makes it look a lot nicer. And it does help keep the temperatures down as you know, it get really hot in the summer. Um, I was kind of curious if the city of Series has ever considered a water feature type park? For the city, like the one they have in Turlock. If that was something that's maybe feasible. I know a lot of kids would enjoy it. And as far as the restrooms, if it's already there, I would not recommend removing it because even though they're nasty sometimes, it's necessary. And I was curious on if any portion of our property taxes go towards funding parks and offsetting the costs from the lighting and landscaping.
Would you like me to answer this?
I'm sorry?
Would you like me to answer this?
Sure.
Um, so I'll go backwards. So property tax, unfortunately, the city of Series receives. Six point four cents on every dollar of property tax. That does go to the general fund and most park maintenance is a general funding expense. So yes, it does go towards it. It's just not very much before we get from property tax. In terms, what was your other? Can you go backwards on questions?
Um, I had a, I was curious if Series has ever considered like opening a water feature?
Uh, so as part of the master plan that was completed in two thousand sixteen, that was a feature and the connectivity here is interesting relative to restrooms. Um, so the new state codes relative to water features require a restroom to be within three hundred feet of that water feature. And the maintenance costs associated with those water features is significant as well as. Folks have some real challenges in keeping the water quality to meet the standards. So it was considered as part of the mark, the parks master plan, but was not included.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so you have the direction you need on that then? Okay. So let's take the five-minute recess. Give everybody a little bit of a break and then we'll come back and address item number seventeen, title fifteen, sixteen and seventeen.
Sure.
Let's put it off until next meeting.
Alright.
What's up?
How you doing?
Oh.
Hey, we're just talking about making this permanent.
No.
Chance for that.
Might have been chance.
I think, I think it was chance. Shushan.
I know.
That is Chandeliers. Yes. In fact, he, he used to live on Shushan.
Yeah.
Well, no, his, his.
No.
His dad did.
Well, that's good. That's fine. That's fine.
Yeah.
No, it's just, yeah, easier. Thanks for offering this up. I just. I was like, well, I could, so I'm not looking at anything.
Not watching the game, not watching.
No. No.
Yes.
Might as well go use the restroom.
Yeah, I'm kidding, huh?
At, at what time? I will call you in the morning. Maybe more Wednesday. Is that why I had to dump the? I gotta dump a bunch of stuff. Wednesday Dalton's got a game, but after school would be perfect. Have me sooner than. She doesn't have a gun. She has no bullets. Oh, she's shooting. I'm not shooting.
Yeah, I like guns.
I'm afraid I'd like use them. Not on you. Okay. Hey, thank you. Yeah, she'll be excited.
Are you guys almost done?
Fifteen minutes.
Discussion. I guess.
Nine that she can handle.
Gotcha. You'll be fine. You'll be fine. It's a great jumpstart. We got a lot of people that already, you know. Served the public and, you know, and I wasn't going to pick Randy. She's already on the planning commission, but. You know, I thought, I was just kind of looking at that. I knew the mayor would pick none, but I was going to pick some of them to be fair. Uh, Randy Cerny's wife was one I was going to pick, but you know what? They need to enjoy retirement. You'll do just fine, big dog. It, it'll be a, it'll be a, a beginning to an end. Right?
Pretty well, yeah.
Not too bad.
Time, like, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why you appointed him.
I know, you're a Crosswalk.
Yeah, Crosswalk.
But you still should. I would want to do the right now. Something else, so we should take on the speaker. You know, so.
You went to Texas?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Where did you go for that?
South of San Antonio, like, two hours. To the right, on the tip of Texas. Can I get the wind in, boys, buddy, and my...
Arizona guy?
You know, person might want to ask that, can you bring a good one? There were three guys, so one guy was riding. So, it's up the next one. I got shot five years ago. It was a combination there. Yeah, it was pretty amazing.
You don't like it over here?
I didn't get to go running this year. Because all the teams activity, so she's like, yeah, you should go.
Let's go ahead and get started. We'll move to item number 17. City of Series Municipal Code Revision Discussion Group Four. Title 15, Building in Construction. Title 16, Benefit and Assessment District. And Title 17, Subdivisions. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, back to the excitement of the municipal code. As we, I'm not sure if we're at the top of the mountain, or starting to head down the mountain, but we're getting there. So, really only four titles left. This would be the introduction of Group Four. These titles, 15, 16, and 17. And you can see, we're getting there in terms of the overall time. We already talked about the schedule. And so, we'll jump right into it unless there's any council questions. So, Title 15, Building in Construction. So, just like the title suggests, this is the different building codes for the entire city of Series. As the council may recall, we currently contract with Stanislaus County for all of our building plan check and inspection. And so, for the most part, our code today, and as proposed here, is consistent with state law, with the adoption of the 2019 Building Code. And so, in the packet, you have both the existing code, and then the redline version, the proposed code for discussion purposes. And so, consistent with previous discussion items, we've left a lot of the comments and the interaction back and forth between the city attorney and city staff on changes that both we've recommended, that the attorneys have recommended. One of the major premises here that we were looking for is whether we could just have the building code reflect the existing state code. Otherwise, you have to go in and amend this every three years, because the state building codes are triennial, meaning every three years they're updated. So, we're fortunate, the 2019 code became effective on January 1st, 2020, so timing worked out pretty well there. But in working with the city attorney and some of the exceptions that are in the code, that we have the ability to take action on. The recommendation from the city attorney that you'll see in the comments there was to leave the code as is, and i.e. every three years, you would adopt the latest building code premise. So, in this case, would be the 2019. For example, the previous action was adopting the 2016 Building Code. Based on that direction, the document is drafted with that in mind. So, everything, these different code sections referencing the 2019 Building Code.
I have a question. I have a question about that. So, the city attorney says that we should, instead of just the current edition, it should say, excuse me, the 2019 edition. But yet, if we go to Chapter 13 of Title 17, that was referenced by the city attorney to leave the general plan without the adoption date, so you would avoid revising the code. So, my question is, what's the difference with doing it with the general plan versus the building code? Okay. What you're talking about right now is, instead of referencing, it's on page two, to adopt by reference, it currently says the current edition of the California Building Standards Code. City attorney is saying that we should put 2019 in there, and then every three years, when it's adopted, then we have to revise this title.
Correct.
Correct. So, if you go to Chapter 13 of Title 17, which is Park and Recreation Land,
It's part of...
Age 72 of 93. It seems to me it's the same thing, because it says the city attorney suggested the revision to just say the general plan of the city and not an adoption day, because then that would avoid revising the code after each GP amendment or adoption.
So, this is completely different. This, in Title 17, is subdivision.
Oh, I understand that.
No, no, I'm gonna explain why, because Chapter 13 is related to Park and Land Development,
Uh-huh.
Relative to the Quimby Act, which is a specific code section. So, the council, the city attorney is referencing a different code section relative to the dedication of park land. It is different than the adoption of building codes.
No, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, it says, it's in accordance with the general plan of the city. Previously, it had said adopted on February 24th, May 24th. It had a date on it, but in this particular case, he's saying, don't put a date in there, so you don't have to revise the code after each general plan amendment. So, I don't really see what the difference is.
So, the difference is, the general plan is a document that this agency controls. The uniformed building code is something that is adopted by the state by leaving the year in, which is what we currently do. We currently have a 2016, so the next would be 2019. When the state adopts the 20, in this case, the 2022,
Mm-hmm.
We have the ability to go through and exempt ourselves from many things, and that's what the city attorney is recommending, is to leave that opportunity open so that you can still exempt yourself from provisions. So, for example...
For the building code.
Of the building code, building code only. So, for example, back under 1502, if you go down to 150205, that section is one of those exemptions that we're exempting ourselves from.
Okay.
We have the ability to do that if you adopt it by each year. Otherwise, you're, you don't get that opportunity to do any exemptions.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
So, I have a question now.
Sure.
And in sort of same direction as Vice Mayor Rhino. Okay, in 15, 1502040, you specifically make a year of 2019. And you do that throughout most of Chapter 15, okay? But then, when you get to Chapter 16, okay, Title 15, Chapter 16, that's the only time it goes and refers back to current year, which is on page 42 of 48. And you look at the bottom of the page, it refers back to current year. See, before, it used to always say current year. So, to me, current year would be if adopted in 2019, and then 2022 comes up, and you didn't bring it for amendment within the council or with the planning commission, 2022 would automatically take effect.
It has to be...
Correct.
It has to be adopted. That action still has to be taken by the council to adopt that code.
What I'm saying is, is you refer to a specific year all the way through, and then all of a sudden, when you get on Title 15, Chapter 16, at the bottom, it says current code.
It's a definition...
Which means the latest in thing.
Well, it's a definition inside, so that definition applies specifically to that chapter. So, it, that definition of current code only applies to Chapter 16
Okay.
Of Title 15.
All right.
That make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on Title 15?
No.
Yes.
On Title 15, so let's go to page 21, would be Chapter 8. When it's talking about California Fire Code, and gases and things that are in storage. There is, is there something in a different part of the code section that would constitute labeling? You know, so are firefighters, when they go into a, into a building, they know what kind of gases are in there, whether it's compressed or liquid gas, just like they would on a tank or how they have...
It's all required. The building, the fire code requires that.
Right. So, it'd be, that would be under the Fire Code?
Correct.
And not under this part of the California Fire Code, the building code, because it's not in here anywhere?
Again, what we're highlighting, what is highlighted here are things that we have specifically changed to meet our needs. So, it's covered in the Fire Code unless we describe it differently. So, these sections, Chief Wise can attest to, he added about 10 or 15 or so sections, based on his experience, to amend the Fire Code to be specifically applicable to us here in Series. So, that requirement that you're speaking to is universal in the Fire Code unless we specifically change it.
Okay.
Chief Wise, you want to add anything to that? We can't lessen the requirements, we can make them more stringent.
Then we're gonna go to page 38 of Title 15, page 38 of 48. There was a couple of footnotes in here from Mr. Westbrook and the city attorney. And as in the footnotes, they're basically talking about a building board that has not been utilized, that could be in the section placed. Since we use the county or the Modesto City for plan checks and different things like that, wouldn't it be wise to put, if Modesto has a universal board?
Stanislaus County, not Modesto.
Okay.
Stanislaus County. Yeah, so, we've been contacted by Stanislaus County, and they would like to renegotiate the agreement that we have with them. So, this is something we're going to discuss with them, the provisions for the ability to use their appeals board within that agreement.
And if we do something with that, as far as using their governing board, then, you know, for any type of...
Appeals, that's...
Appeals, then we'd use theirs, okay?
Correct. That's, that's the conversation.
I already answered that question. Let's go to... So, my next question is, is something else that was brought in here, and let's go to, well, I think it would be Title 16. So, we're gonna wait.
Yep.
It'll be Title 16, so I'll wait.
On Title 15, page 9 of 48, Notice of Disconnection, actually, number three, the appeal. Is that paragraph a new paragraph, or is that existing? Number three, appeal?
Don't recall off the top of my head.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, why is the appeals to a determination of the building official to the city council when other appeals, such as code enforcement, are through a hearing officer?
We can clarify that. I don't recall if it's existing or not, but we'll clarify, make sure that's consistent.
All right.
In this case, it would be a building type of issues would go through the appeals board that Councilmember Klein was just referencing.
Right, and it said city council, so...
Correct.
That's all I have for 15.
Anything else on 15? All right, so moving on to Title 16. So, Title 16, relatively straightforward title, benefit assessment districts, relatively small title in the grand scheme of things. Only a few chapters there. We'll make note of 1603, traffic signal benefit district being moved, previously in Title 12, moved here. Also reference 1604, public facilities fees, back when we did Title III, which has already been adopted and is effective. The intention was to move public facilities fees as a financial consideration into Title III. Unfortunately, it was missed in the move of things around, so in order to stay consistent, we're recommending to include it here in Title 16. And when everything is done, the final, final adoption of the entire code, we would move it from 16 to Title III. Unless council has direction, otherwise, we don't believe at this point in time it's worth amending three that we've already completed in order to just change this, move it through as is in Title 16, and then make that final change before we codify at the very, very end. And that's, that's it for the most part. The language is in essence the same. We don't use benefit districts all that much, but the language is here, and nice to have when we do need it for those specific development projects where it comes into play. Questions?
I don't have anything on 16.
You answered mine.
Comfortable with that idea of moving the public facilities fees into three at the very end? Just making sure that we're good with that. All right, moving into Title 17, subdivisions. So, a little more meat to this one. Subdivisions is, you know, covers the process of improving all subdivisions within the city of Series. Again, for the lar, for the most part, it's consistent with the existing code, but it has been updated to reflect current language. There was changes in the subdivision map act, and a number of other consistency issues that were updated. Previously, we had a subdivision committee. I don't know when the last time that was actually used, Tom, before your time. So, it's abandoned good. Councilmember Rhino, you may recall the subdivision committee.
Oh, yeah.
But it's, it's been many years, so recommending with the way the procedures and everything are built now, recommending deleting that. And then, a couple of things with language, as I note here, 1710. Right now, developers pay a street to you fee, and then we install the street trees, giving the option of language where a developer could install the street trees, subject to our approval, so that's in 1710. And then, one of the other changes there in 1714, allowing for the planning commission to approve lot line adjustments. So, today, lot line adjustments require city council approval. Consistency-wise with other improvements of that level, of that layer, we think it's more consistent at the planning commission level, but that's a policy decision we'll look for council direction on. And that's the overview of 17. Any questions?
Yes. Page 13 of 93, 1703140, street names. It says, "Street names shall be approved by the commission." I've never known the planning commission to approve street names, so that needs...
They're part of the map, so, I mean, when you approve a map, the names are on there, but yeah, that needs to be clarified.
I thought it was the county that you send it... I thought it was the county, that you send it to the county with the street names, and then they approve it, correct?
Well, the county verifies that the names don't conflict from a, a mail, an SR nine one over any of those issues. We also look at, you know, names that sound the same. You know, you don't want the same things, but technically, today, they're approved by staff.
Okay.
Does the code exist today?
So, are we going to strike by the commission?
Correct. We would change that to staff, be consistent with the existing language, unless council wants to give us other direction. A lot of times, the names are on the subdivision, so by approval of a tentative map, then they're approving the street names.
Well, I'm sure, though, that the commission has never been told that, and that they need to be looking at street names.
Yeah, this, I believe, is a new provision, but I don't, I can't be a hundred percent confident.
You can't? Okay, on, um, page eighteen of ninety-three, we're just gonna ignore what these guys over here are saying. Um, seventeen oh three four ten B, septic tanks. And it said that the fees, okay, wait a minute.
So the language that was drafted by the city attorney was model language that said, "Septic tanks may be authorized for the period anticipated before sanitary sewers will be available to the subdivision and when the soil conditions, percculation, blah, blah, blah." Staff is uncomfortable with that language of allowing a subdivision to move forward on septic. And the, the proposed language there was staff's proposed language to say, it's only limited of when you would allow a subdivision to move forward on septic only.
Well, and then it says, "When septic tanks are to be used, the minimum parcel area permitted shall be as established by the city council?"
We don't want to go there. I mean, that'd be a condition, and that's in essence why we think this would be a very, very unique situation, that we don't anticipate ever being used. So that if it was going to allow septic, it's coming to the council for your authorization, because we don't want to get into this. This is not something we want to allow on a regular basis.
So my question is, if it's, if it's an issue with the soil, why would we even allow them to start build if there was an issue with the soil?
We wouldn't. That's, that's.
So why even have septic tanks in there in the city limits to begin with?
I mean, there's, one, there's existing septic, and there's, there's a provision in law that, that allows for them. We just want to significantly limit when, when they could ever be used. This is under subdivision.
Because I know that if we incorporate a county island, and they have septic tanks, they're allowed to keep their septic tank service until their septic tanks fail, and then they're required to hook up to the city of.
Only if it's within two hundred feet.
Right.
If, if they are not within two hundred feet of an existing hard line sewer system, then they, they are allowed to rebuild their septic system.
Okay.
In existing situations.
Alright.
This is talking about a new subdivision.
Okay, page thirty-eight of ninety-three, section D.
So just back to that one, so you're comfortable with the language as is? Okay, sorry. What, page thirty?
Thirty-eight of ninety-three, D. The surveyor's statement, director's statement, director's statement. I'm not sure why we have two director's statements.
Sorry, where are you at again?
I'm on.
Page thirty-eight.
Of ninety-three, D, like David.
Yep.
Third line. Director's statement, director's statement. Do you see it?
I do not.
Page thirty-eight of ninety-three.
Seventeen oh six oh nine?
Seventeen oh six, no, it would be right above that in section D. Seventeen oh six oh eighty?
Yep.
D.
Now I got you.
Third line, director's statement, director's statement.
That's just a, just.
The Stanislas Irrigation District Statement.
Yeah, that should be Tier, Tcholak Irrigation District, but only if necessary.
But do you see, why do we have two director's statements?
Yeah, that's just a typo.
And then the Siri Stanislas Municipal Water Service, does that even exist?
Does not exist.
Okay. And then page forty-one of ninety-three. Seventeen oh six one fifty. Seventh line. It says, "Shall execute the director's certificate on the map." Is it the director's certificate and not the engineer's?
Uh, depends on that definition. We'll verify.
Okay.
Could be the engineer or the surveyor, depending on that. We'll verify. The director is defined as the city engineer, I believe, in this section, but we'll verify.
Page forty-two of ninety-three. Seventeen oh seven oh two oh B. An applicant can appeal the director's decision to the commission? That's just the question. I didn't know that they could do that.
Don't know of whether that's existing or new. I believe that is a new provision.
So that would mean if somebody would.
The action of a director, so in this case, if the director made a determination that an application was incomplete, that could be appealed to the commission. Or the director made a determination that something wasn't allowed in their submittal, like they rejected a document, like, say, a title report for some reason, that the director said that's not acceptable, um, that that would be something that could be appealed.
And I could envision a circumstance where the city attorney, through the, the, the checking of the map process before it was to a final map, maybe finding something that, there was a discrepancy that needed the commission's action.
So you would, if somebody didn't agree with what you told them, you would say you can appeal it to the planning commission?
Correct.
Planning commission or building commission?
No, we're, we're.
This is subdivision.
Subdivisions.
Uh, okay.
This would be a subdivision, so it would be the planning commission.
Okay.
Because they have authority over subdivision, so in that case, city engineer, community development director had an issue with something that was submitted on a map that a person has an appeal process to say, "No, I disagree with," in this case, Daniel or Tom, take it to the planning commission. That's what that provision's for.
Okay, page fifty of ninety-three. Seventeen oh eight one sixty. C, D, E, and F. Do we currently do that? We have a certificate for execution by the commission secretary, a certificate for execution by the director, a certificate for execution by the county clerk? Do we do all of those now, or is that something new?
Uh, the city engineer signs it. I know the city clerk signs it for a map recording.
And that's, that's all in the subdivision map act, that's.
Right.
I don't even know why, I mean, we could do without this, it's, it's required with the subdivision map act.
We could make a reference to the titles required by the subdivision map act, but I believe those are all required.
They've been required for fifteen, twenty years.
The commission secretary doesn't do it, though, does she?
Um.
That one's the only one I'm questioning.
City clerk.
Yeah, but the commission secretary is the one that I'm questioning. The others I know for a fact are in map act, but I don't know about the commission secretary. That's the one we'll verify.
So you can verify that?
Yep.
Okay, and then page sixty-five of ninety-three, the street trees. So, currently, I thought we used to have where, um, a developer had an option where they could install the trees.
Used to, then it went away, so then they only paid the fee and we installed them. So we're trying to put the language back to give that option.
And does that work better to have? I mean, they still have to, they still have to put the tree that we want, but then you still have staff time that has to go out and verify that they've put the tree, they've planted it correctly, right?
Yep.
And that it's in the right location.
Six in one, half dozen the other, I mean, it's.
So why do, why do we want to go back to that instead of just having?
We want to give the option so that we can, you know, there may be circumstances where it makes a lot more sense. We'd just like to have the ability, the flexibility to make that determination on a subdivision-by-subdivision basis. This would be something that would be required with the conditions of approval, where when the map is going through for approval, with that determination and decision will be made, we just would like the option to be able to make that determination. I could see a very small infill, where they're building, say, ten lots, where it's pretty straightforward where those trees are going, going to go. They might as well build them when it's locked in like that. The bigger the subdivision, the less likely for the subdivider to install them.
But how are we going to verify that they've? Because there's a certain depth and everything, so how are we going to verify that those were actually?
We have a city standard, so it would be the same improvement inspection that would be required for anything else. There, obviously, there's a process that would have to be, um, put in place for that.
Alright, so it's not going to, it's not necessarily a cost savings for us, it's.
No, it's not intended to be a cost savings. I mean, the fee is built to cover those costs. So if the fee needs to go up, the fee goes up to cover the cost associated with it. So it's not relative to, um, savings per se. It's more, um, giving flexibility for which option works best, depending on the development. So development specific is the idea.
Okay. So page eighty-one, lot line adjustments. And like you said, those used to come to the city council for approval, but yet, the original parcel map was approved by the planning commission, correct? So it, it just makes sense that that's who would do the lot line adjustment, would be the planning commission.
That was the logic. Um, if planning commissions intended maps can approved by a planning commission, why wouldn't lot line adjustments be?
Right, right. And those are my only comments.
I got one.
One?
One. Page five of ninety-three. Um, next to last paragraph. Says, "Fire, fire, fire protection means such fire hydrants, uh, and other protective stuff." But if you look in there, it says, uh, "Responsible as required by the fire marshal of the fire department." We, per se, do not have a full-time director, uh, fire, uh, fire marshal. Wouldn't it be better served if it said, "Fire chief" or his de, designate?
We'll verify. I think we may want to just provide a definition for the fire marshal, because there's other references to the fire marshal, that it may be cleaner to just define fire marshal as the fire chief or anybody designated as fire.
That's what I'm saying, the fire chief or designate.
I, I think we want to define that fire marshal, because I know in the code, there's quite a few references to fire marshal, and I don't think we want to change our definition without being consistent universally.
Well, can, you can go fire chief, fire marshal.
So what I'm saying is, we would, in that definition that you're just reading, fire protection, it would stay fire marshal. We would add a definition right above it that said, "Fire marshal," and we would define what a fire mar, who the fire marshal is.
Yeah. That's it.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, so, uh, next step for this group, because title seventeen is relative to subdivisions, it requires planning commission approval. This item is anticipated to go to the planning commission, um, at their next meeting, um, on January twenty-first, it's a Tuesday because of the Monday holiday. So they would review this title seventeen, and we'd make the few notations here that the council has. And then the idea would be come back for, uh, the initial public hearing on February tenth, uh, with an adoption on March ninth, and with an effective date of May first. That's the target per the schedule that the council has amended and adopted, unless council would like to give us some other direction. Wise, we're good to go.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to add anything? Okay.
Alright, just want to mention one last thing here, um, in terms of the mini-code in the next group. So title, title eighteen, group five, is the zoning code. So we save the best for last. It's, it's only three hundred and twenty-nine pages as it's draft right now. So, um, it is scheduled to come before you on January twenty-seventh as a discussion item, unless council would like to give us other direction. So just wanted to make sure, recognizing, um.
Do we want two more weeks? As long as we get it at the same time we were gonna get it for the twenty-seventh.
And we, and we don't get it like Friday.
Yeah, what I'm gonna say is, if we give you two weeks, I don't want to get it like two days before, like we would be on the twenty-seventh.
We're, we're prepared. Well, I, I'll lean on the city attorney. We talked to them today. They are anticipating having, um, their review completed, um, that we would be able to get you this agenda package on the twenty-first for the twenty-seventh?
I personally would like two more weeks. Get it to me on the twenty-first and add, maybe not the twenty-seventh meeting, but the following.
February tenth.
Two-week meeting, three hundred pages, and, and there's a lot in the zoning stuff.
There's a ton.
That doesn't mean we've given you more time to get it prepared.
Right.
So what, uh, because of the agenda item for twenty-seven, for the twenty-seventh, and the other items that we're having, so for zoning to be on the February tenth meeting, if we could have, just because of competing agenda packages, to be able to get the regular agenda package out for you on the twenty-seventh, on the twenty-first, by the end of the day on the twenty-first, to create some separation, it would be, we would ask, give us a couple more days and give till, say, the twenty-third, how about Friday would be really, really great. It could be the twenty-fourth to get you that package before February tenth.
Well, wait, if, if we left at the twenty-seventh, you just said you would give it to us on the twenty-first.
If, if you're gonna give me more time, I'd like to get it. The more time I have, the better I can get it.
No, but then what happens? We wind up, we wind up the same thing happening, where we get it in less than a week's time, so.
If you want to leave it to the twenty-seventh, we can leave it to the twenty-seventh. I, I, five days, I can get through it.
Well, no, you were the one that said if.
I understand.
Okay. It's, it's up to you.
I'll just have to get through it.
No, it's up to you, because you said that if we did it on, in February, we would still want to receive it on the twenty-first.
Oh, I know, that I said too.
Okay, and that's what I'm going, I agree with you on that.
I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay, so I, I guess I don't understand why we can't do that for the February. Still make it for the February for the mayor and the rest of the council, but if you're already prepared that you were going to give us the stuff on the twenty-first, let's do the twenty-first.
It's, it's an agenda challenge, because we're providing it to you as the council. We need to provide it to the public, and we don't have that agenda posted yet. So we've got some logistics there. Tom, any suggestion of how we'd handle that? Because that's a, it's a discussion item, so it's not necessarily a public hearing. Providing it to the council prior to posting it, um. So.
Are, are we gonna, are we definitely gonna go out two weeks?
That's a, for the here, for the, for the discussion item, it'd be on February tenth, but they're asking to have the, the draft document on the twenty-first, and that'd be the same day that we'd be publishing the agenda for the meeting of the twenty-seventh. Right, so you've got two competing items out there. So that's, I was just trying to separate, create a little bit of separation between those two items from a, from noticing standpoint.
Well, I'm hearing, I thought I was hearing you say something differently, that if the agenda for the February meeting wasn't done, then we couldn't get the information packet on the twenty-first because we wouldn't have it available for the agenda to be posted, no?
No, that's, no, I'm just trying to separate the two processes, that's all. So just, tell me what you want.
Yeah, the notice is separate, and you can have.
It's a discussion item, so it's not a notice, but.
I just would like as much time as we can on the three hundred pages for the municipal, for the zoning.
So. So what, give me some direction.
It doesn't have to be on the twenty-first of January for me. I can give you two days, but I don't want it to be any longer than that. Because then if that's gonna be longer than that, then we should just keep it at the twenty-first.
On the twenty-seventh, you mean, instead of the February.
Yeah, keep it on the twenty-seventh, getting it the twenty-first, but if it's gonna be.
I would agree with the mayor.
If it's gonna be February tenth and we get it February seventh, that defeats the whole purpose.
Yeah, of, of course.
We won't tell the, our colleagues in Sacramento.
We'll keep them on the same deadline. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will, you're, you're good there, right? With everything? Okay, so with that, we'll move to council member referrals. Is there anything that council member would like to have placed on a future agenda? Hearing none, we'll move to reports. Um, I have nothing to report. Uh, councilmember Klein?
I have nothing.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
I just wanted to comment that on the Public Works monthly report, it's, I think it was the Public Works, maybe it was, um, redevelopment, about Fourth Street is now going to have twinkle lights. Where are, where's Toby? Twinkle lights.
Yeah, they were.
Oh, no, I'm excited about it. I think it's great that we're finally moving in that direction.
They were, they were on for the month of December.
They were?
Yeah.
Well, I was gone most of the month of December, but I didn't even see them.
Going down now.
Shoot, are they still up?
Um, not sure if they got removed today. Do you recall, Jeremy, if they got? They're supposed to be this week.
Okay, well, I'm gonna have to drive by. I, I was gone most of the month, so.
Unfortunately, the trees were not, um, not really big, so they were relatively small on the ground.
But still, they were twinkle lights.
Yes, there were twinkle lights on every one of the street trees. Hopefully, we're hoping, um, to add lights in the future on the buildings as well. So we're working, uh, Steve is working with the property owners as well as Sierra Display, who's controlling those lights to see what we can do to put some additional lights.
That was all I had.
Okay. Councilmember Condon? Across the council, Mayor Condon?
Sure, I participated in a ride-along over the weekend with Series PD. I want to thank Chief Collins for setting that up for me. Also, my office hours will be from twelve to two on Saturday, January twenty-fifth, so I hope to see you there.
Okay, Tom? Let's switch places, they tried to mix me up, didn't you? Uh, Tom?
Senator Mayor.
All right, Mr. Wells?
There are technical difficulties required, Tom's laptop to be playing double duty there, so again, we will get that ironed out, see what the issue is there. Just want to reference, I don't see anybody left really in the audience on the beautification committee, so the target is to try and have the first meeting on Tuesday, February fourth, so we will get emails and communication out to the members that were selected to try to get that first meeting started, and then move forward with the quarterly meetings by the council's direction. Wanted to mention the Stan Cog Policy Board meeting for this Wednesday, the co-op agreements, the cooperative agreement between the city of Series and Stanislaus County, to Stan Cog, sorry, to fund the PSNE, so Plan, Spec, and Estimate for the Service Mitchell Project is scheduled for their approval, then it would come to council on the twenty-seventh to get the funds flowing from the regional measure L projects to help move our Service Mitchell Interchange Project forward. So that's an important issue for Stan Cog, we do anticipate that to get approved on Wednesday, and then come back to this council on the twenty-seventh. Wanted to note the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday on the Monday, the twentieth, so the city hall will be closed. And then also, the Centennial Group, Centennial will be meeting on Tuesday at five PM on the twenty-first, and we are getting really close to getting the construction started on that, and we'll be reaching out to anyone who has purchased a brick with a proof of what the brick, what they put on their paperwork, and then with an opportunity for each person who's purchased a brick to sign off on that, indicating what that brick will say. And we're hopeful it would start in February and wrap up construction somewhere in the middle of March will be our hope. Obviously, weather pending and other challenges, but it is moving forward. Just want to give the council an update on that, thank you.
Atisha? Nothing? Daniel? Mr. Collins? Kevin? Okay, Jeremy? Supervisor DiMartini? Did I miss anybody? I can't see behind that big screen, so... Okay, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, at six PM. Thank you.